Point of view of the Robert City Council's order, Thursday, the first of eighteen, Madam President, you have your vote, please.
Council President South.
President.
Councilwoman Martin.
Aye.
Councilwoman Castillo is absent. Councilwoman Correa is absent. Councilwoman Harris.
President.
Councilwoman Hassan.
President.
Councilwoman Elyosi.
President.
Councilwoman Jennings.
President.
Councilwoman Fortune.
President.
Councilwoman Montos is absent. Councilwoman Narducci is absent. Councilwoman Princepin.
President.
Councilwoman Ryan.
President.
Councilwoman Yerden.
Yerden.
Councilwoman Zurier is absent. You have ten present and four are absent.
Thank you, Madam President. The indication will be given by Councilwoman Erica Hassan.
In the last week, we have two miles to do, should we exercise every day as members of the city council at State Legislature? And certainly, in our prayers, we ask for what happened event today, that we thought of that on my flight, because it's a difficult time in our world. And we just ask that we consider that and ask for the credit in favor of their families. This is due press call.
Plenarumisance will be led by Councilwoman Erica Hennig.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, and to the Constitution of the citizens of this country. One nation, united in heaven, with thy justic'd in thy justice.
The rule of justice and the government, where all who see and hear, and who are committed to speak, counsel, and advocate for the achievements of our people.
The interregent. Move to the rule. Mr. President. The interregent votes for the rule of... Second amendment. Second amendment, the intergents is in the discussion, all those in favor? Aye. As opposed to the other two areas.
One is my son.
It is a yes. Fortune respects the readings, item four to twelve and to receive. Second motion, Mr. President. The interregent votes against the discussion of the readings, the items twelve, that second amendment, the intergents, in that discussion, that's a crime.
Thank you. I'd like to recuse myself in the item number eight, and I don't file any documents with the law. Thank you so much.
There's no discussion, all those in favor? Aye. All those opposed, receive.
Item twelve, again, thirteen to twenty-three.
Mr. President, the interregent. Motion to discuss the reading, item thirteen to fourteen, and to defer to the committee on committee's vote. Second motion. The interregent votes against the discussion of the readings, items thirteen to fourteen, that's second by the intergents, in that discussion, all those in favor? Aye. All opposed, refer to the committee on findings.
Orders, second reading.
The interregent. Motion to discuss the reading, item fifty to twenty-nine, and to cancel the second time of the roll call. Second. The interregent votes against the discussion of the readings, items fifteen to twenty-nine, that's second by the intergents, in that discussion. Madam President, you have your vote, please.
Councilwoman President South.
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin.
Aye.
Councilwoman Castillo is absent. Councilwoman... Councilwoman Correa is absent. Councilwoman Harris.
Aye.
Councilwoman Hassan.
Aye.
Councilwoman Elyosi.
Aye.
Councilwoman Jennings.
Aye.
Councilwoman Fortune.
Aye.
Councilwoman Montos is absent. Councilwoman Narducci is absent. Councilwoman Princepin.
Aye.
Councilwoman Ryan.
Aye.
Councilwoman Yerden.
Aye.
Councilwoman Zurier is absent. You have ten present and five are absent. Motion carries a matter to ask for the second. Presentation of the resolutions, Councilwoman Narducci.
The interregent. Motion to discuss the reading, item thirty, and to defer to the appropriate committee. Second motion. The interregent votes against the discussion of the reading, item thirty, that's second by the intergents, in that discussion, all those in favor? Aye. All opposed, refer to the committee on findings.
Councilwoman Zurier, item twenty-one.
The interregent. Motion to discuss the reading, item twenty-one, defer to the appropriate committee. Second motion. The interregent votes against the discussion of the reading, item thirty-one, that's second by the intergents, in that discussion, all those in favor? Aye. All opposed, refer to the committee on findings.
Presentation of the resolutions, Councilwoman President South.
The interregent. Motion to discuss the reading, item thirteen to thirty-four, defer to the appropriate committee. Second motion. The interregent votes against the discussion of the reading, item thirty-two to thirty-four, that's second by the intergents, in that discussion, all those in favor? Aye. All opposed, refer to the committee on findings.
Councilwoman Martin.
The interregent. Motion to discuss the reading, item thirty-five, defer to the appropriate committee and matter. Second motion, Mr. President. The interregent votes against the discussion of the reading, item thirty-five, that's second by the intergents, in that discussion, all those in favor? Aye. All opposed, refer to the committee on findings.
Councilwoman Correa, item thirty-six.
The interregent votes against the discussion of the reading, item thirty-six, and to pass the matter, that's second by the intergents, in that discussion, all those in favor? Aye. All opposed, refer to the other two areas.
And thirty-seven, Councilwoman Hassan.
The interregent. Motion to discuss the reading, item thirty-seven, defer to the appropriate committee. Second motion, Mr. President. The interregent votes against the discussion of the reading, item thirty-seven, that's second by the intergents, in that discussion, all those in favor? Aye. All opposed, refer to the committee on findings.
Councilwoman Elyosi, item thirty, resolution addressing the school department immediately beginning their transfer proposal process for student transportation services.
The interregent. The motion has been voiced, second motion. The interregent votes against the discussion of the reading, item thirty-eight, that's second by the intergents, in that discussion, all those in favor?
Um, this resolution is in response to the first of, unfortunately, a serious problem city, and still has, basically, is dealing with providing safe transportation for our children to the school system. Unfortunately, all of us, in particular, our children, our parents, had to live through an eleven-day strike. Now, we're all in different sides, and there are several reasons, et cetera. The fundamental issue is the city of province, and the management of fail, its children, and its parents, in the school system. Capital City on size cannot show its responsibility by not offering safe transportation for our children. It's not right. And unfortunately, this whole song, and this whole conversation, we knew once and there is. And we can point fingers, we can propose the whole, let me, why we got there, and how we got there. It's not, it was bad at this time, but let's try to figure out, let's learn something from it, and we learn this other issue. Unfortunately, for a student, this mind, for my constituents, is not an important disorder. For a student, let us down, and let us push harder than, especially for children. And we cannot have the city be vulnerable like that again. I know this evening, by the way, we had the opposed conference, but I want to, um, pull my counsel card like that. At least for the resolution this one, this resolution is to instruct the school board to begin the process, because there is, it does take time to put out demand, to put together a contract, and put out a new contract, and bust for our children. I recognize that. If we're in a bind, see if we have the votes to be our extension, fine. Whether we pass it or not pass it, we'll have that conversation soon. But we should not allow us to be put in this situation again. So this resolution is asking the version of school board, city, to begin the process to, which takes about a year and a half, by the way, unfortunately, to put together RFP, put together the potential vision, put together the safety guidelines we're going to need, so we can avoid this in the future. Now, doesn't mean for a student in the future can't bid eye, but it does mean other companies have a potential to bid eye a year and a half, two years from now. It gives the city, especially our children, options, provide safe, secure busing, year round, to, um, every year of the school year. In particular, to not leave us in a bind in the world. And some is, some easy lessons we can learn, of course, don't have the contract expire just before the school year begins. That's one lesson we can learn. And the two of course we have to adjust, is causes that attack a company, and not our children, so those are the lessons we can learn. And then also, we should have the appropriate ways that if someone does ride between, um, related issues. That is, have an efficient, effective, immediate response, and how it's addressed, and all parties can work out the differences, by the way, not at the expense of our children. So that's what this resolution is about. It's not saying, uh, let's go ahead and not change it, and that's going to change your mind, and it's a burden for the force, and a couple more items ahead of us. It's all just ask the school board to begin the process, so we are not left in a bind again. I heard the comments, it's important, I think it's a positive message, and it also shows that we're learning our lesson, unfortunately, we tend to mistake our children's interest. Thank you, Mr. President. That's my vote, for today.
Thank you, Councilman, for your resolution. And I do agree that, um, the bus strike did leave, um, some of our most vulnerable students in a, um, in a dire predicament. Um, so I do agree that, um, we definitely need to make sure that we start our RFP process. But I would like, um, to also state that during our last, um, committee meeting, um, the school, members of the school board, as well as some of the administrators from the school department, did, um, present, and they did state that they have, um, begun the RFP process, because they do it, excuse me, they do recognize that it takes time, and, um, they need to look at all the options, but it has, um, they have initiated the process.
Thank you, Councilman. There's no discussion. All those in favor? Aye. All opposed, the other two areas.
Reports from the meeting, speaking out of the messages.
The interregent. Mr. President. Motion to discuss the readings, item forty-two, and pass, and first time, roll call. Second motion, Mr. President. The interregent votes against the discussion of the readings, item thirty-nine to forty-two, that's second by the intergents, in that discussion. And Madam President, you have your vote, please.
Councilwoman President South.
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin.
Aye.
Councilwoman Castillo is absent. Councilwoman Correa is absent. Councilwoman Harris.
Aye.
Councilwoman Jennings.
Aye.
Councilwoman Fortune. Councilwoman Montos is absent. Councilwoman Narducci is absent. Councilwoman Princepin.
Aye.
Councilwoman Ryan.
Aye.
Councilwoman Yerden.
Aye.
Councilwoman Zurier. You have ten, and Councilwoman Zurier is absent, you have ten lines, and five absent, and motion carries a matter to ask for the first time. Committee on findings, Councilwoman John.
The interregent. Motion to discuss the readings, item forty-three to forty-seven, and to pass, and first time, roll call. Second motion, Mr. President. The interregent votes against the discussion of the readings, item twenty-three to forty-seven, and to pass all matters for the first time, roll call, that's second by the intergents, is their discussion. Mr. President.
The interregent. This briefing for my college, and for, um, my colleagues who were attending my college, who are not able to attend, I, I just wanted to direct your attention, as you know, for use for tax stabilization projects. And I wanted to, I was again, bragging for the work of the city council, finance committee, the financial team of the city, I was still working hard to continue the economic development and growth of our city. Just a little backdrop, as you know, approximately forty-one to forty-two percent of property in the city of province is non-taxable and growing, which means it's our charge to figure out how to grow our tax base, not at the expense of our owners, or the whole, whole city, but sometimes trying to create development, which will help in that regard. These four projects are important to know, two are neighborhood projects, I just want to bring your attention to, we have the Wansco building. This, um, present value, they're going, they're going to invest, um, two, they're going to invest over ten million dollars in this project. The cost of the building, it's going to be two hundred and twelve thousand dollars, right? The present value, the value of, the present value of the property is three point one. When the project is complete, the value of the property is going to go to fifteen million eight hundred thousand dollars. It's going to bring two hundred and seventy-five jobs, going to one hundred and fifty construction jobs, one hundred and twenty-five permanent jobs. They're going to begin the process, beginning January next year. This project is a whole one, addresses the neighborhood concern, I urge all my colleagues, my colleagues to look at the old building, this thing is creating, it's creating permanent jobs, hundreds, and we're going to have millions of dollars invested. This is an unbelievable project, you should all be proud of it. It's part of growing our tax base, not at the expense of those who own. I urge your colleagues to support this. Any other questions? I have the story for us, you also have the read up. Another great project, and you all have to hear another neighborhood project, one forty-five coalition. The present value of that property is seven hundred and eighty thousand dollars. They're going to invest ten million dollars in construction dollars. The future value of that property is going to go from seven hundred and eighty thousand dollars to twelve million dollars. It's going to go to create one hundred and fifty construction jobs, right? And permanent fees alone for the city of province, by the way, starting January next year, one hundred and thirty-one thousand dollar per fee. Now, it's a different kind of project. This project... And, you know, it's, it's so much missing.
They all got full, right?
Yeah, enough all got full. So much is missing, so it's an empty lot, and they're going to build a bigger building. I'm going to need to see that. The interregent, I think we got the point. The next two, which is right next door to City Hall. This is the old Triple A Building, it's right next to it. Current value is four million eight hundred and seventy thousand dollars. They're going to invest five million dollars, and the property is going to go up to ten point one. This project is very exciting, it's going to be a combination of residential, commercial, and retail. This is an excellent project. So they intend to get a TSA, based on the amount of way that was sold, put up for investment. The next project, which is the building right after, right next door, is another project. This is a fifteen-year, this is a, the building right next door is the same company. It's going to be a combination of retail, residential, property. They're going to invest twenty million dollars into this property. It's going to create permanent jobs. Why this is, although, the answer is that, clearly, this is true, because we don't buy it as expensive, or for the management of that, but on the other hand, they're investing back in our city. So I urge your colleagues to support these TSAs, be proud of these TSAs, because this is the type of development that we all should be proud of. Neighborhood TSAs, downtown TSAs, cruising out tax base, more economic growth, and more jobs. That, um, is the facts. So I thank my committee, the finance committee, the finance, um, team, great projects, urge you all to support it. Thank you.
Thank you, leaders. There's no discussion. Madam President, you have your vote, please.
Councilwoman President South.
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin.
Aye.
Councilwoman Castillo is absent. Councilwoman Correa is absent. Councilwoman Harris.
Aye.
Councilwoman Hassan.
Aye.
Councilwoman Elyosi.
Aye.
Councilwoman Jennings.
Aye.
Councilwoman Fortune.
Aye.
Councilwoman Montos is absent. Councilwoman Narducci is absent. Councilwoman Princepin.
Aye.
Councilwoman Ryan.
Aye.
Councilwoman Yerden.
Aye.
Councilwoman Zurier is absent, and ten lines, and five absent, motion carries a matter to ask for the first time. Please just follow me.
The interregent. Motion to discuss the reading, item forty-eight, and to pass, and roll call. Second motion, Mr. President. The interregent. To discuss the reading, item forty-eight, that's second by the intergents, in that discussion, all those in favor? Aye. All opposed, the other two areas. Motion carries.
And forty-nine, we should...
The interregent. Motion to discuss the reading, item forty-nine to fifty-one, and to pass, and roll call, defer back to the board of contracts, and so on. Second motion, Mr. President. The interregent. To discuss the reading, item forty-nine to fifty-one, and to defer all matters back to the board of contracts, and so on, that's second by the intergents, in that discussion, all those in favor? Aye. All opposed, the other two areas.
And fifty-two, that's fifty-six.
The interregent. To discuss the reading, item fifty-two, and to pass, and roll call. Second motion, Mr. President. The interregent. To discuss the reading, item fifty-two, that's second by the intergents, in that discussion, Madam President, you have your vote, please.
Councilwoman President South.
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin.
Aye.
Councilwoman Castillo is absent. Councilwoman Correa is absent. Councilwoman Harris.
Aye.
Councilwoman Hassan.
Aye.
Councilwoman Elyosi.
Aye.
Councilwoman Jennings.
Aye.
Councilwoman Fortune.
Aye.
Councilwoman Montos is absent. Councilwoman Narducci is absent. Councilwoman Princepin.
Aye.
Councilwoman Ryan.
Aye.
Councilwoman Yerden.
Aye.
Councilwoman Zurier is absent. Councilwoman Harris is absent. Special committee, and Department of Oversight, Councilwoman...
The interregent. Mr. President. Motion to discuss the reading, item fifty-three, and to pass, and roll call, defer back to the board of contracts, and so on. Second motion, Mr. President. The interregent. The interregent. Moves to discuss the reading, item fifty-three, to defer the matter back to the board of contracts, and so on, that's second by the intergents, in that discussion, Councilwoman Montos.
Thank you. So, the first student contract was originally approved by the school board and the city council in twenty fifteen, and it ran for, um, it, it ran for three years with two one-year options forgiven. So the three-year contract expired at the conclusion of last year, which was June twenty eighteen. The school department has now asked us to approve both of the one-year extensions, and the first would be for the current identity year, which is twenty eighteen to twenty nineteen, which is now, and the second would be for the first two of the school year, starting September twenty nineteen to June twenty twenty. This was originally submitted to this committee in September, at which time the school bus strike was suspended, however, it had not yet occurred. The administration asked us to continue the matter, which the committee did. The school board department, in the second committee, met on October twenty-four to consider approval of the two extension at the administration's request. By this time, the first student bus drivers had begun and ended the strike that lasted for eleven school days, which had adverse impact on our educational system, and our students in general, and families. So the first student was able to avoid responsibility for harm, um, for the harm the strike caused by negotiating into the contract of forced forgery. That simply excused them from responsibility in the event of a strike, and although it also excused the school department from paying the buses for the strike or the cost that occurred due to the strike. Because the strike lasted eleven days, the amount of money the school department saved ranged around six hundred thousand to seven hundred thousand. On the other hand, the school department did incur a significant amount of money because they had to provide transportation for certain students, particularly those with, um, transportation in their IDK. They have not calculated how the overall expense, however, they're assuming it's ranging around the two hundred thousand mark. So with that said, parents and students incurred significant additional costs, and the harms that outweighed these savings, um, again, were significant. So when first student announced that the strike was settled, the mayor announced also that the city would agree to pay first student with the six hundred thousand dollars in savings, in return for a prompt reservation to the strike. By the time the strike came before the committee for review, the mayor announced first student had decided to reject the mayor's offer. As a result, the renewals, um, the committee voted on would allow the school department to keep that net savings. The committee voted to approve the two renewed, um, renewals, and recommended the city to vote to approve based on, significantly based on, um, primarily based on the two factors. So one, even though the renewals contain the same force of the jargon, clause excuses first student for responsibility for a future strike, such a strike is unlikely because the bus drivers also signed a three-year collective bargaining agreement with first student. As a result, any strike over the next two years would be deemed illegal, which would enable first student to seek a court order requiring the bus drivers to go to work. This tool was not available for the recently concluded strike because the contract between the bus drivers and first, um, and first student. Second, the school department recognizes the harm that recently concluded, um, that the recently concluded strike occurred, and it wants to change its bus services to prevent such, such harms to occur in the future. To accomplish this goal, they do need time. And as, um, the councilman stated earlier, it takes over a year, um, for the RFP process to go through, and also, um, if the school department were to, um, to, um, to offer a contract to another bus company, they also would need time to purchase the new fleet of buses to service our students. And there is a backlog, as well, on the development of buses. So, so one of the things that the school district, um, discussed was to review the student assignment plan, and to see if we can tweak, or enhance, in the neighborhood schools to reduce dependency on transportation, which is a significant cost. Second, review procurement alternatives that will open up the field to new vendors by redesigning the RFP process to create options. And possibly, maybe, an award to the new bus vendor, but more importantly, they also want to give, um, the community an opportunity to provide input, um, and to hear the voices of the community, and to make sure that whatever process or whatever approach they decide, it's what's best for the city, it's what's best for the students and family. So the school department, in the second committee, also informed the school department that it is ready to work with them to revise the year's budget, to redirect the savings realized from the strike, to serve other priorities for our children's education. So the reason why we presented, and we decided to approve, um, the two-year contract, is because, one, we want to make sure that the school department has enough time to, um, to go through the RFP process. Again, the councilman stated that it takes time, and we want to make sure that we're doing the processes done correctly. And we also want to make sure that the school department has an opportunity to look at various options when considering what to do. So is it best to have our own bus company? Um, should we offer another vendor an opportunity to work with the district? But all of that takes time, and so we do need to have a safe, a safe method where our students get to school, and without the contract, we're also sinning for students on the school bus, without safety precautions that also protect them. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. There's no discussion. The interregent. Thank you, Mr. President.
Um, just, um, my, um, I am still, what I, I first, I appreciate the, the councilman's statement, and, and the, um, analytical analysis. I think that I'm always, when I look at the document itself, it's actually before the bottom, is one, which always gives me concern, is that when this is such a, in contract, I always, I come to feel, these types of things, I'm looking at the finance committee, they actually ask for a full contract, and I notice here that we don't actually have a full contract, we just have a one-page document. And that always gives me concern, because the district constantly just gives us a page name, and you have the same list of full contract, and then when you look at a full contract, you find out that contract may have been suspended years ago, you don't have the authority to, to extension, all those kinds of things, if I just bridge my cards in the future, you get these kind of one-pages, asking for a full contract, because you need to get the full score. Second thing is, with, with, what has been, which I think is interesting, is that the actual first, it looks like, the extension, which I don't understand this, same, signed in June twenty-eight, twenty eighteen. What I understand is, so in June, we signed the extension, some of the parties, and then eventually, it took an entire month, month and a half, before it finally went to the board of contractors, it's a fly. So from June to July, before the bus strike, before the storage, city, I guess, if you look at the signatures here, at the city's office, your first student, with all these people signing it, back in June twenty eighteen. So I don't know what people were doing back in June, clearly, no one was watching the store. My concern is, this is a continuing problem. I'm glad they ended at the first student, so they're not going to take the six hundred thousand dollars, and that's good, because really, by the way, if the mayor wants to stop anything out of check, you have to go to a proper championship, anyway, because there's nothing against that. And I hope, by the way, there is no money that we don't know, that we find out later